Good evening, everyone. All heads bow, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity, God, and we thank you for the governing body that's gathering all that are here on this beautiful day. Now, God, we pray that you would just direct and guide this meeting, God, that all be on one accord, God. We pray that you would give us the words to say, what to say. Now, we pray your blessings upon each and everyone that's here. In your holy name we do pray. Amen and amen. At this time of year, we all pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next one, please come to the church or say, question.
Gladly, Green House of Grace Ministries, here at six seventy-one West Manchester Road, Spring Lake.
Thank you so much. I'll now call for any additions or deletions to the agenda there, person.
Yes, um, I'd like to add Black History Month Proclamation. Uh, Kooshia Plaxios.
Like?
Um, I wanted to delete the number inside of C. B, A, Betsy Minwitts. Kooshia Plaxios.
I'd like to add closed section personalities.
Okay, so that is adding the Black History Month proclamation to seven A. Um, everything else will follow subsequently. We're also deleting C, then adding noting C. Um, and so every other letter or word will be done. Any other deletions or, oh, and we're also adding a closed section. Personnel. All right, now I'm going to motion to approve the agendas with the statements and deletions. Kooshia Plaxios.
Salute.
Kooshia Chadwick, I second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, now I'm taking a motion to approve the consent items, the draft minutes of the January eighth, twenty twenty-five special meeting, draft minutes of the twenty, of January twenty-seventh work session ma- meeting and budget amendment, uh, thirteen. Oh, you took that off, I'm sorry. So just approval of draft minutes for the January eighth and twenty-seventh special meeting and work session, there, person.
Um, salute.
Kooshia Chadwick, I second. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Um, we will now move on to our public comments section. Uh, remember that the public comments are limited to three minutes and there's a timer on the screen to keep you, um, on time. I'd like to invite Patrick Morrison to the podium. Please state your name and address.
All right, hey, I'm Patrick Morrison, uh, business owner of three businesses at one oh four South Second Street and, uh, antique store and motorcycle shop and future owner of the business on Main Street, which is now, from what I understand, in, uh, some of the historic development for the Green House, which I've just seen today, so thank you to all that were part of that. And, uh, wanted to thank everyone that's been involved in all the major cleaning and spreading, uh, trees, the overgrowth. I've seen up here on the roof street, it's looking good, so thank you, but that's not a lot. Uh, I've come here to ask for contributions from the community. So, uh, for those of you that have noticed the mural at one oh eight North Main Street, the Paul T. Campbell mural, uh, which was the second mural that the Parents Committee, uh, which also, I'm a member of the Parents Committee, for those who don't know it. Um, so one of the problems with the mural is we can't see it. It's dark. So, I talked to the owner of the building and he is good with us putting some solar lighting on the building. I've got him to contribute a hundred bucks towards it. I'm gonna contribute the labor, so I come to the community, the board, anyone else that's interested in getting involved in a solar lighting project, uh, like to do something above and beyond what we already did at the Special Forces Mural. Uh, those lights are good, but I think we could light it up a little better. So, solar lighting is basically the more you put into it, the more you get out of it. So, um, I already got a hundred bucks towards it and, uh, my labor, which is some amount of it. So if anybody's willing to contribute to it financially or with some plan, uh, I would gladly receive any kind of help. I'm gonna leave the card over the table, y'all can reach me there. Everybody else, I'd like to get a hold of it. So, I think I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys.
Uh, I have Mr. Ken Smith here, the engineer for Caitlin Farms, and I don't know whose he can use. Uh, our goal, their comments, our public comments, is that directly for Caitlin Farms.
Yes, ma'am.
So what was our goals for our public comment section during public? All right, we'll now move on to our presentations. And we do, would like to acknowledge, um, that February is Black History Month and we are acknowledging that with the proclamation that I'd like to read today. Um, and it's the Black History Month proclamation from the Town of Spring Lake. Whereas the Town of Spring Lake values diversity, inclusivity, and the rich cultural heritage, heritage of residents. And whereas Black History Month is an annual observance recognizing and celebrating the invaluable contributions, achievements, and struggles of African Americans throughout the history of the United States. And whereas Black History Month provides an opportunity to honor the legacy of African American leaders, leaders, artists, educators, and activists who made significant impacts in various fields, inspiring generations to come. And whereas the Town of Spring Lake acknowledges the importance of bringing awareness, understanding, and appreciation of African American history, culture, and traditions within the community. And whereas Black History Month serves as a reminder of the ongoing pursuit of equality, justice, and respect for all individuals, regardless of their race or ethnicity. And whereas the Town of Spring Lake recognizes the need to celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of African Americans past and present, and to foster an environment that promotes equality, inclusivity, and unity. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town of Spring Lake Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the month of February as Black History Month and encourages all residents to engage in educational activities and discuss the honor and the honor and invaluable contributions of the African Americans to society adopted this tenth day of February, twenty twenty-five. We will now move on to our President's Day proclamation. We had a big book to go through, babe. Um, and then the Times, the President's Day, uh, proclamation for the Town of Spring Lake. Whereas President's Day is an annual observance held on the third Monday of February to honor and celebrate the leaders who have served as President of the United States, and whereas President's Day provides the opportunity to reflect upon contributions, leaderships, and sacrifices made by the Presidents of our great nation who've played a pivotal role in shaping the course of history. And whereas the Town of Spring Lake recognizes the significance of President's Day in fostering a sense of natural pride, beauty, and gratitude for the individuals who have held the highest office in our land. And whereas President's Day serves as a reminder of the principles upon which our democracy was founded and the responsibility we share in upholding those principles. And whereas President's Day encourages us to engage in civic education, promoting deeper understanding of our nation's history, and inspiring future generations to actively participate in the democratic process. And whereas the Town of Spring Lake acknowledges the importance in honoring our past Presidents who have guided our nations through times of triumph and challenge and have left an indelible mark on our society. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town of Spring Lake and the Board of Commissioners hereby recognize and observe President's Day as to honor and pay tribute to the leaders who have served as the President of the United States. Be it further proclaimed that the Town of Spring Lake encourages its residents to engage in activities that commemorate President's Day, such as educational programs, community service, and reflection on the values and ideals upon which our nation was built. We have further proclaimed that we express our deepest gratitude to the Presidents of the United States for their dedication, commitment, and service to our country. And we encourage all citizens to join in recognizing their contributions on this special day. And witness whereof, I, he, and Anthony Mayor of the Town of Spring Lake, along with the members of the Board of Commissioners, do hereby set forth this proclamation to be duly recognized and observed by all citizens of the town, given under my hand this tenth day of February, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. We'll now move on to our, um, presentation seven C, the Confluent Process. Uh, Ty, if I can, I keep the voting. This is Mr. Ty Vaughn, the interim director and chief of staff at Cumberland County Community Development.
Thank you, good to see you, Mary, and the introduction, Ty, everyone tonight. Um, wanted to come before you tonight briefly to talk about the process we're going through right now of permanent county development. So, you saw, I think, back in August, um, last year, we talked about the urban county designation. Um, and of course, we have eight municipalities excluding the city of Fayetteville because they get their own pot of money up in that designation. And so each, every five years, we come before you and do a strategic plan. And that's called the consolidated plan or the con plan for short. Also, in that process, we also do what's called the annual action plan, which I know you all have heard of before. Um, but the con plan serves as the annual action plan for that first year. And then each subsequent year, we do a, a separate, um, action plan. Also, that is the, basically the framework or the, um, plan for each year, but then at the end of the year, we do what's called the CAPER, which is the comprehensive, um, uh, plan that basically does a benchmark, we did repeat those, those, um, benchmarks that we set forth in the actual, actual action plan. Um, and so right now, we are going around to our eight municipalities within our urban county designation and we are presenting, um, because we want to get the feedback from, um, you all in front of the community. Um, you may have saw, maybe two, three weeks ago, we did a press release. In that press release, we had some links there to do some community surveys, um, for the community as well as for, um, our nonprofit agencies who work in that space, whether it be, um, Health and Human Services, um, what have you. Uh, of course, uh, we've been getting a lot of good feedback since then, but I think you could never have too many avenues or, or ways to, you know, present information. And so we've asked our, our county, uh, Public Information Office to actually, um, put together, uh, flyers, uh, poster flyers with a QR code on it, and we'll be sending those out, um, to the various towns so that, um, citizens are able to come at their leisure and, you know, scan the QR code, whether it's on a door or an elevator or somewhere, um, because we want to get that feedback. Because I think in information, the information is only, you know, only, uh, a, uh, a starting point. Um, but we need that starting point in order to make plans and also create, um, criteria going into the future. Um, so that's citizen participation part. Um, there will also be a needs assessment done, and so that's a market analysis that will be done. But with those needs, we need the feedback, because, you know, when you, my data people, when you have data sets, it really means nothing unless you have something to sort it into. And so we need that community feedback to say, hey, we see this, we see the numbers, but what is it like on the ground? You know, people who are living this every day in those particular demographics of different situations. Um, also, uh, the strategic planning part of it, um, we would be doing a housing assessment, which talks about housing impediments. And so, um, you know, we have fair housing. Do our landlords understand fair housing? Do our residents understand fair housing? Do some of our lending institutions understand fair housing? There's a gap there sometimes as well. So we make sure those impediments are, are being looked at. And then also with the annual action plan, I think y'all will probably talk about it more than I can. In the annual action plan, we will, we will put together, um, that first year plan, so FY twenty-six, we'll put together that plan, and that will serve as a framework or benchmark for what we're doing going forward. Now, there are some national objectives that come out of the, uh, the Housing Urban Development Department at the, at the federal level, but we want to make sure that we tailor that to meet the needs of our community, and so it's really important to get that feedback. And beyond this, we will be having agency meetings, like I said, with the Department of Social Services, different nonprofits, the Health Department. But at some point, probably, don't quote me, I, I hate saying things like, I, I get quoted on it. But by the end of this month or early March, we will be having a, um, a, a community meeting, um, maybe one or two. Depending on how, how low attended it is, we may have in different locations to kind of just take, um, you know, in-person verbal comments from the community on what they like to see happen with these dollars. Because they are finite dollars, but I think, um, I think it, it requires our bosses, the people, to tell us where we're gonna, where we're gonna put these dollars, what's the best place to put these dollars. They know there is, and most of the time, that's what we know. Um, also, I, we were missed, so I came up here to talk about briefly our programs. And so, um, the programs, our main programs that we, that we administer are the Housing Rehab Program, and so that is a dual program. The Housing, um, Rehab Program that we call colloquially a fool, uh, that house, that, that program is based on the home's equity. And so the home has a certain amount of equity, and we're able to tap into that equity and do a deferred or payable loan, which means that if you meet the requirements for the program and you remain in the property for fifteen years, we forgive the loan. There's no, there's no cost, um, to that homeowner. Also, we have a provision where we can pass it to the next of kin with, with some, there's some rules around that. But we want to make sure it stays with the family, because we know in our community that one of the biggest, uh, drivers of wealth is homeownership. And so we want to make sure homeownership is affordable and sustainable for our community. Also, we have what's called the Minor Program. That's a grant program, and, um, I would give them credit, I went, I went to the board last April of twenty twenty-four and asked them to increase that program. It was ten thousand dollars, but we don't have, come how much housing costs, um, materials cost. And so that program is a thirty thousand dollar grant. And so we're able to go into homes with that thirty thousand dollars and do the health and safety things, whether that be asbestos, lead, um, you know, those types of things, weatherization, um, what's, what's able to keep those individuals in their homes. Um, and then also, we run pro- grant programs like, uh, public service, um, grants, um, infrastructure, affordable housing, um, and homeless prevention. And so I know many of you, all of you, know about the, the work of the, the COC, the continuum of care. And so that's that, that's that space we work in as well. And then finally, um, I want to leave you with just, with just saying that, um, our programs aren't as good as, um, our programs are only useful if people use them. And so it's important for the words to get out there, and so, uh, we have, we have a, a, I want to call it fund balances, but there are, there are, there are situations where we have funding, but people don't take advantage of the funding, or they may know about this program, not that program. And so it's really important to make sure that the, the citizenry knows about, um, the various programs that are offered to them. And, and don't just assume that it's not attainable to you, because they're very simple. Um, we, we get the information, we get to do the application, and the meantime, you use people through the program. And so it's really about that word amount and getting it out there. Um, and so I will stop there, and I will try to answer any questions that the, that the, the board may have.
Thank you, Ty, are there any questions from the board? I, um, I did have a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
As well, as far as the, um, rehabilitation and retrorehabilitation, that's also for investors, not just for homeowners, correct?
That's correct, so that program really is targeted towards investors. And so the goal is to, is to help finance, um, them to be able to attain and renovate these properties. But then there's also the affordability period as well, that they are, um, targeting, um, I think that's not a good word, but they are renting to those, those individuals who are, um, in that income bracket, uh, for that time that they're under that affordability period.
May I proceed?
Thank you. Um, the CBG funds, uh, is that part of the programs that you, uh, funded right now?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, didn't we break away, didn't that, some of that money break away and go to, to Fayetteville? And then, so how much was left in the pot for the other needs of families?
So the, so during, there have been many annexations, um, over the years, and we all used to be in one collaborative, basically. And I'm gonna get my dates wrong, and so I should have a date, but I'm gonna say the date. Um, I believe it was in, um, early, uh, twenty-ten, early twenty-eleven, where there was a separation and the City of Fayetteville, um, um, applied to, uh, become an entourage on their own. And so it is based on population, and so the population of Fayetteville is somewhere around the two hundred and twenty-three thousand, um, you know, space. And the, the county as a whole is like three hundred and sixty thousand. And so there is a larger portion of citizens in the City of Fayetteville. And so the, 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 the actual, uh, split of the cost is about, about that. And so, um, we get about, we get about, um, almost, I'll say, almost, um, a little over a third of what the City of Fayetteville gets in, in that particular funding. Um, but there are situations where, um, you know, when we have, uh, well, I'll say it like this. We're an entourage of the community, we're a tier-one community, and because of that, the funding is all but guaranteed, basically. Um, but there, but there are opportunities when we have projects where there's, you can ask for that, for that, that funding. And so they have balances state, things like that, at, at the state level as well.
Kooshia Plaxios?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for presenting today, and, uh, Spring Lake is a high rental community of homes that are getting older and older. And as we address some of the life and the important needs here in Spring Lake when it comes to the housing, um, we do need to make sure that people are aware of this program, housing rehabilitation and rental rehabilitation. So we'll continue to try and get that word out as a means to help those, um, to make our community a little bit better. Thank you for presenting today, sir.
And, and I, and I, to that point, we're working internally, staff, to, um, revamp our website, um, to make sure that it, information's the most up-to-date information, um, to attract people. And also, maybe even include some videos on the website where it's, where a person is explaining, uh, what this program is and maybe the simplicity behind getting into the program, because I think sometimes that's the barrier. People think, well, I don't have this information, or it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be, um, you know, prohibited for me, but it's, it's really not in most cases. And I'd also be remiss, um, you probably heard, um, Cumberland County, um, was selected, um, as part of Team Ten with the R-Star Homes Program with the USC School of Government, NC Impact Project. And so we'll be in that program for the next eighteen months, um, in Chapel Hill, along with Hartnett County and San Jose County. We're all one collective, and we'll be talking about affordable housing, workforce housing, and talking about best practices in order to make sure we have, or what we need in the area, whether that's investor, um, and input, or it's just the best practice of what's been done across the country. And so I'm excited to be a part of that cohort and, and lead that team. And we will gladly be back in front of you, um, at some, at some future day to talk about, um, what we gleaned from that program. And so I do, I definitely concur.
And then what's your new word? Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We cannot take questions from the audience. We cannot take questions from the audience. Sorry. We are now moving on to our public hearing. This is a ZO N twenty-four dash zero zero four one. Excuse me. Rezoning. Rezoning from, um, RR Rural Residential and R-ten Residential District to R-six-A CZ Residential District Conditional Zoning or to a more restrictive zo- zoning district for portion of a parcel containing fifteen point three three plus or minus acres located on North Oakdale Road and east of Old Angus Lane submitted by Kenneth Smith, agent, on behalf of Caitlin Farms, L.L.C. and Jerry and Jane Smith and Vishva, is that the same right?
Yeah.
Vishva, Vishwarathul, Planner Three, Cumberland County Department.
Good evening, board members. My name is Vishwarathul, and I serve as a Planner Three at Cumberland County in Planning and Inspection Department. I'm here today to present, uh, the recently request for ZO N dash twenty-four dash zero zero forty-one. As indicated, the subject property is situated in the north central portion of Spring Lake, specifically to the east of Fort Verti. Uh, the applicant owner is Jerry Smith. Ralphoff is, uh, the resident in this applicant in this matter, seeking approval for a rezoning request. The request is to rezone current zoning with RR Rural Residential, R-ten Residential to R-six-A Conditional Zoning. The intent of this request is to facilitate the development phase four of Caitlin Farm Residential Community, uh, with an area approximately fifteen point three three acres. Here is the Conditional Zoning Site Plan representing, representing, uh, Phase Four, which includes a total of twenty-eight lots, with a typical lot size of six thousand seven hundred fifty square feet with a width of seventy-five feet and depth ninety. The subject property is primarily surrounded by single-family residential areas to the east and to the south, and with commercial industrial to the north. Phase three of the project is located towards the west of the project site, which is highlighted in the red and toward the west. This map illustrates the zoning of the area surrounding the subject site. Uh, to the north, the line is predominantly empty. Uh, moving towards the eastward, zoning shifts to RR. And while towards the south, the area is primarily zoned as R-ten with some RR zoning. To the west, the zoning is R-six-A Conditional Zoning, which pertains to Phase Three as well as the current request for Phase Four development. There are some hybrid soils, uh, identified in the non-inferior of the project site. However, the applicant intends to avoid encroachments, uh, into the area with the hybrid soil. Central water and sewer, uh, lines are available, and the applicant intends to connect to the water and sewer for the Phase Four. This is the contour representation, which indicates the project site is predominantly flat. The character of the surrounding area of Caitlin Farm is predominantly residential towards the south and the east, and would lens towards the north and the west. The land use designation of the project site is low-density residential. The subject site sits within Spring Lake Land Use Plan twenty-two. Uh, the intent is to support residential density that aligns with or exceeds nearby development to promote dense and development close to the existing development, including multi-family housing. The request is consistent with the adopted land use plan. This map represents, uh, APC associated with four, four pair field, and the portion of the subject site is located in the zone APC one. Here to the left, uh, this is the originally approved plan for Phase Three, uh, with the APC one zone lying overlaid on the top. And towards the right, it's the updated plan with Phase Three and Phase Four, with APCs lying overlaid on the top. The site plan illustrates, uh, the relationship between Phase One.
I'm sorry, can you go back one more?
Uh, here in the side, uh, the site plan, uh, illustrates the relationship between Phase One to Three and Phase Four, showcasing the proposed modifications. Mr. Fagan will provide further details of the family, uh, family subdivision during the presentation. Here are the views of the property, uh, to the surrounding property. This is the view of the property from the west, looking towards the east. Uh, this is the view of the property looking towards the northeast. This is the north view of the site. This is looking towards the west. And this is, uh, looking towards the south, uh, the pictures are taken from the west of the property. The key conditions of the Conditional Zoning for Phase Four of our mobile homes are prohibited. Uh, park and recreational area will be included in Phase Four. However, if the Phase Four Homeowners Association merges with the existing Caitlin Farm Homeowner Association, then the park and recreational area for Phase Four may be eliminated, and the access to Phase Four will be from Phase One to Three. The disclosure statement in the Homeowner Association document's site plan and the deed informs that Caitlin Farm Phase Four is near a voluntary raise and that the lots are the risk of potential zone Area One. Both the Joint Planning Board and the county staff recommends approval for this request. Uh, property owners and the agent have agreed to the conditions of approval. Uh, that completes my presentation. If you have any questions, the staff will be addressing them for you. Uh, that completes my presentation. If you have any questions, the staff will be addressing them for you.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments, uh, from the board? Mayor, first.
Um, yes, can I? I noticed in the paper, um, that there was opposition from U-LAC, is that correct?
That's correct. I think, um, Steve Moon would be able to, um, represent this question and address this question.
Please, I'm sorry.
David Moon, Deputy Director of Planning and Inspection for Cumberland County. And you have a question now?
Yes, um, I was reading in the paper that U-LAC, uh, has, uh, opposition towards this. And, oh, is that, is that incorrect?
Within the commission package, as well as handed to you by Patricia Moore, who have a copy of two letters, one from January and one from last Friday, from U-LAC indicating its concerns about encroachment into the accident potential zone number one. The staff recommended approval of the rezoning, knowing that portions of the project, as well as the existing phase one to phase three, um, extend into the accident potential zone. But if I can go back to your slide. Here we go. Phase three, rezoning case we're reviewing this evening, abuts the existing phase one to phase three of Kalan Farms. The town commission for Spring Lake has already approved the conditional zoning and preliminary subdivision plans and flats for that project, and the owner and developer of the land has already made substantial improvements. Thus, there's already vesting that has occurred on that site. So legally, not attorney, but legally it'd be difficult for the town to decline rights that has already been granted to the owner and developer for phase one to three. As you know, here in the next phase, portions of this phase one to three through minor modification, lots have been pulled, uh, further back from that APC. And the applicant has also minimized the impact within, um, phase four. However, we made our staff decision. Town already approved, up through the north, the homes in phase one to three. Then to the, um, east, the existing flat residential community, that's also, the homes go about as far north, is phase one to three. So homes within the proposed phase four do not go further north than the encroachment that already occurs within the resident, residential community to the east, as well as the Kalan Farms, uh, phases one through three. So that is why staff was able to support the rezoning, because the proposed homes in phase four do not extend any further than homes that have already been approved by the town. Does that address your question?
Oh, so I only have the January second, um, later, but now I have the one for the third. So, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could just come, and I apologize. What was your name, Ken, sir?
David Moon, Deputy Director.
Mr. Moon, uh, just as a refresher, because we get these from time to time, and I know the board's familiar, but can you just refresh the board with the standards that your staff, uh, briefly, not like a long one, but the, the standards of what you're looking at, uh, and then maybe expand a little bit, because it sounds like, uh, y'all were worried about disparate treatment, because it's already extended on both sides farther north.
Correct.
But can you just refresh the town with the standards your, your staff looks at and why you're recommending approval?
Okay. The application before you for this first case is a conditional zoning. A conditional zoning differs from a conventional zoning in that a local government can't establish conditions on the use and development of a property so long as the property owner also agrees to those terms and the conditions. Under a conventional zoning, conditions cannot be added. So if you adopt an R-six A to a property, you can't prohibit mobile homes. But under conditional zoning, the town can add additional conditions, again, if agreed by the applicant. Mobile homes are not allowed. Town can place that condition on the development of this property through conditional zoning. You cannot through, uh, conventional. So that's a benefit to the town if you want to have more say and control over the use of property. So conditional zoning is allowed both by the general statutes in North Carolina and within your zoning ordinancees. Uh, does that, address that question?
Partially, but then, and then what standards did, uh, your staff look at, uh, to accept the, to recommend approval of this application?
Right. We look at a number of, um, components within town, town zoning ordinance and with the, um, approved future land use plan or comprehensive plan to the town. So for this property, as Ms. Bethok presented, um, there's a land use plan, and it has a land use designation for residential type. And the density that's proposed is consistent with the long-range plans for the town. We also look at the character of the surrounding areas, uh, whether it's residential, commercial, and whether it's compatible to the, um, character of the surrounding area. Staff determined that we, in our opinion, that the proposed development is compatible, both of the existing Kalan Farms, and you saw in the presentation by the lot size and the lot area, and through the conditions that are established through the conditional zoning. And it's consistent with single-family residential that abuts to the east. So we look at the character and the harmony of the surrounding area, and we felt it was compatible. And based on the density that is proposed on a property, that is the number of units per acre, generally look to see if there are appropriate, uh, public water and sewers and roadways that are available to address the impacts that would be generated by the redevelopment. And there are water and sewer lines that, um, abut this property. They've already been extended into phase one through three. So phase four will be served by water and sewer. Without giving a, uh, classroom presentation, uh, and more information, uh, about this, but there are other, uh, aspects that we looked at. We also take in consideration, um, the, uh, other components of planning, such as, uh, Rulac goals and their objectives. We look at economic development impact, Fort Rag, Fort Liberty, and they're, they're important to the community in terms of, uh, contributions to our economy, Spring, Spring Lake economy. So, uh, we taking considerations, their, their policies, their plans, and listen to their comments, but felt that the encroachment into that, that accident potential zone, uh, was minimized or is, uh, minimal. So, uh, that-
That, that answered it. Well, thank you so much, sir. That answered it, yes. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the board? Could you open?
Mayor, thank you. So with rezoning from the rural residential, the RR and R-ten to, to R-six A, is, it's with additional, conditional zoning on it. I did notice with the, the RR, the R-ten, R-six, that the, the plots of land decrease as we go. So as we are doing this case, that allows for additional homes to be built on this, on this property. So if my math is right, it may not be, but it looks like it's, it adds an additional eight new homes to these lots by reducing it down to an R-six A. Is that what we're looking at? Or we're looking at standardization just based upon the, the plots of land so that the houses are, are uniform?
The R-six A would allow for, um, more housing, higher density than the zoning that's currently assigned to the property. So yes, it would allow the property owner to develop more homes. But through this conditional zoning process, we've assured that the lot sizes would be compatible with the neighborhoods that are, uh, abutting the site.
And so with, with Rulac, um, I, I read that there's ten homes that's affected in this accident potential zone one. And so was Rulac's request or concern that no homes be built in APC one on, on that property? Is that what I was reading?
That's correct. If you look at the diagram you see on the screen, phase four is the eastern part of the development, where you see the cul-de-sac running north to south. You'll see the red line, which is APC zone. So that is the southern extent of the APC zone, and then it runs northward. So in that area highlighted yellow, there are ten lots. Two of them are split by that, uh, red boundary line. That boundary line is not exact, because Rulac holds the actual, actual maps. But those are the ten additional lots that are referenced in the objection letter. The others to the west are in phase one through three, which the town has already approved throughout another conditional rezoning that occurred back in twenty twenty-one, and has already approved the preliminary subdivision plans.
And then with the home, with the decibel levels, I, I looked up decibels. We were talking sixty-five decibel plus. I know that there was an abatement of, of additional insulation. I don't know how much insulation is gonna be added and what the reduction of that was gonna be. But it's just doing a, a Google search. Uh, vacuum cleaners listed at seventy decibels, garbage disposal is listed at eighty. A Boeing seven oh seven one nautical mile out, which is six thousand eighty feet, is one hundred and six decibels as we go through there. So with that light plant, with that light path for the planes that come in, the abatement for these houses, how many of them are there gonna be abatements for? Is it just the ten, or how many homes is that, is gonna be listed?
The client staff of the county, we're, we're not home builders.
Right.
So that would be a question you can address to the applicant staff. It's also a home builder. So they would be able to better address your question.
Okay. And, and one last question on here. The roads leading in and out of Kalan Farms here. Also, I, I would see that Mac Street and all that. Is there concerns or, or plans to implement gravity on top of hills so that there is, uh, egress in and out through a different path? Or is it all just being fumbled through Kalan Farms?
The, the engineer for Kalan Farms is here. He can address that question in a little more detail. But there will be no connection to Mac Street to the, uh, east, um, to prevent traffic impacts from affecting that neighborhood and avoid impacting a wetland area that occurs between, um, Mac Street and this development. Conditions within the conditional zoning, um, mandate that access for Kalan Farm Phase Four can only occur through Kalan Farms, uh, phase one through three, with the exception if the town council is authority to the town commission. If there's a need to extend that cul-de-sac, either as a, uh, temporary access or permanent, the developer can come back and the town ask for the extension. And I, I initiated that condition. One reason is for, if, um, the developer chooses not to have constructing traffic go through existing residential neighborhoods, they could possibly talk to the, to the other property owners and see if they can bring in construction from that other, uh, from, from the other cul-de-sac. But that's just left as an option and the town will have to decide.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the board? All right, and now the public hearing is open. Uh, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Please approach the podium, say your name, and address for the record.
Good evening. Um, my name's Kenneth Smith, one twenty-one. You will drop. Linden, North Carolina. Um, first of all, thanks for having us here tonight. I do appreciate your time. I'm a stammering lopez. Um, I don't know whether you all would rather me, I guess, present something, or maybe if you'd rather short questions, whichever works best, but, you know, which might-
Well, I'll you present then, ask questions.
That's fine. Um, guys, we're only here tonight really because the original developer, who was assigned conditions, did not abide by the conditions he was assigned. Basically, we've come to find several things. Stafford Land Company, when they got the original approval, failed to have the wetlands delineated. They failed to also check to see and verify if gravity sewer would actually serve phase three, which we've come to find out now that it will not, as it was originally anticipated from Oakdale Road. What we're proposing with phase four in this conditional rezoning of just phase four is to make the gravity sewer connection to that existing outfall that Spring Lake has within Jerry Smith's parcel. What we would be doing from there is extending it through phase four back to serve phase three. We don't really, we never wanted a phase four to begin with. We're kind of hamstrung here, and that's why we're trying to let you all know. The problem too is that phase four is contingent on phase three's change from an egress perspective. And just like you all had expressed concerns about, hey, why not connect to the east? The thought process was two-part. We now have done the wetland delineation. We know that there is a jurisdictional stream back there. We do not wish to make any permanent impacts to that stream in any way. We've also already gone ahead and gone to the ordinary court of engineers and gotten approval for a nationwide fifty-eight permit. That allows for us to do a temporary impact within the stream just to make the sewer crossing, but it does not permit a permanent egress and fill within that stream or the jurisdictional stream itself, sorry, or the wetlands. I got a little confused. Um, the other thing that we wanted to kind of bring to your attention, and the original developer's lack of getting the wetlands delineated, the original site plan as it was drawn had lots that fell within the wetlands, within the jurisdictional stream, and within floodway. None of those can be built on. And we're trying at least now to pull the lots, and I know everybody's worried about Rulac. Yeah, that's a problem that I can see you all seeing, you know, and saying, hey, address these. We're pulling lots already out of that northern area where in twenty twenty-one it was approved, and nobody even realized that the floodway was there. So our intent is to clean up the mess that the original developer did not bring to anybody's attention. In the last twelve months, we'd probably spent closer to fifty thousand dollars in due diligence between a survey for the topography, a survey for the boundary, getting the wetlands delineated, fish and wildlife studies and assessments to show that the property is clean, and then on top of it to verify that gravity sewer is there. The other concern that we had was if we tried to proceed, even if the wetlands weren't an issue, if we tried to proceed with sewer and hands you all just phase three, as it was originally drawn, say the wetlands weren't an issue, the town of Spring Lake would be struck with a gra, or not the gravity, but a sewer lift station for just forty lots. Not something that's economically feasible for the town to operate, nor the maintenance long-term that you would want on something like that, or the simple fact that the town of Spring Lake said, we don't want it. Forty-some homeowners aren't gonna agree upon the operation and maintenance of a sewage lift station, which could pose issues later, runoff issues. We don't want that either. So the intent, get four rezoned the way we need to, modify three, which is the next area, and then come back to you all and say, hey, we have a cheaper to maintain gravity sewer connection through Jerry Smith's land, which we're asking of us phase four. Modify three to fix where lots are in known problem areas, and give the town something that long- Modify three to fix where lots are in known problem areas and give the town something that long-term we feel would add value tax-wise between the tax base and the fact that we're getting rid of mobile homes that are sixty-plus years of age out there. And, you know, and I, I know you all have questions. Um, again, I just, I think you would ask the question about the connection to the east of the Mac Street. If we could, we would. The problem is that that is a regulatory floodway with one hundred and five hundred year flood patterns going through there. We can't go to Culver big enough and get it permitted to be a street crossing there. A lot of Spring Lakes runoff all the way from about here to this grade five. Eighty-seven, everything on Grand Boulevard slowly meanders through there. And you're picking up multiple square miles, not to mention all of Fort Bragg that is slowly going through there. I know you all probably have been involved with talks and DOD about the runoff that they're generating and then the lakes back there. I can't remember the name of it, wherever the apartment complex is there on Odell Road that has the pond, so. But anyway, um, what I will let you know too is we started this in March. Mr. Huff was the developer that took over from the original developer, Stafford Land Company. We started the pilot environmental, made our wetlands delineation, flagged everything for army corps of engineers requirements. We then had them look at the wildlife investigation because that was one of the criteria in the fifty conditions that we were given. We had that evaluated already. Um, next we did the survey with forty site solutions. They're going to be our surveyor on this project and they have already located the town of Spring Lake's twelve-inch gravity sewer outfall within phase four. They've located boundaries. We have a recombination map ready to recombine phase four back into three and the rest of Kalan Farms when the time comes, if we did approval, basically. Um, we have verified that gravity sewer via phase four will work. Um, trying to think what else we had. We've gone through this with county planning. Uh, started that about mid to late October. November, we started dialogue with them and found out the process. This would be my first time dealing with the town of Spring Lake. I do apologize if I'm a little green to your processes, but I do know that we worked through county planning and facilitated with Ms. Patricia. Um, we've gotten the site plan verified by county planning. You all here at the town of Spring Lake, it's been found to be in accordance with your ordinances. Um, and I know you all had expressed concerns about the density in conjunction not only with RULAC, but what the future land use plan allows. We're technically with R six A, you could be allowed up to, I won't say it's nine and a half units per acre. We're not seeking that. We're seeking one point one units per acre. And we have pulled everything as far back to the south and to the east out of the worst part of the APC as we possibly can. So we're just trying to develop what we can develop. Knock wetlands. The wetlands all around it would remain as a buffer, including the jurisdictional stream, which would be a buffer to all of all the areas. So these homes would remain wooded all around it. Basically, all they would see is just what they can see in that open area currently. Sorry. I'm sorry if you all have any questions. I didn't think it was more than that.
Sheriff?
Um, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you all for bringing this up and, you know, doing the right thing to feed it to the people.
Yes, ma'am. We're trying.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, but we don't want, you know, we don't want to leave those, uh, you know, the limits out in the area. So I just want to thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Board?
Mayor, thank you. Uh, while the engineers up here, I'd like to get him to address a few things and highlight his conditions in the plan. Um, I want to echo also what I heard from county planning is that this does address three main issues. Number one, it is consistent with our land use plan. Check. Number two, it is compatible with the surrounding area. And so it is for low density. Our goal as a town, I think we've had discussions, is about increasing density when the infrastructure is already in place. Instead of growing in outer boundaries, we just have to keep extending and extending. And third and finally, we have addressed the water sewer impacts to make sure that the volume is available and if, if the lack of a sewer lift station, we could do gravity feed.
Yes.
So those are three main things that this, this plan addresses. But I would like you to take and highlight a couple of comments. Uh, forgive me for taking it through this because there's a lot of conditions associated with this.
Yes, sir.
And so I'm looking and reading from the letter from the county. And so number twenty-one is a circular condition. Um, any subdivision located within the town, sidewalks that will be required on one side of the street location to be determined by the municipal officer and the building inspector. Further, such sidewalks have been installed according to the town's specifications. Um, does this indeed have sidewalks on one side?
Yes.
Even in the phase four?
Yes.
So you know, this is a spot question on top of your head, what's your linear treatment?
Oh, it's off of my head. No, I can probably add a good, with the effect of RULAC, I mentioned the approximate. I don't, I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Uh, I'm only asking you to highlight, before those were going with this. Um, I, I don't, I don't like to have developers required to install sidewalks and subdivisions in which the town is going to have to maintain after. So will these sidewalks be dedicated to the town at the conclusion of the development?
It would be within the right way that the town would be dedicated. So that would be my interpretation. Yes, sir.
That answers that question. I'm just trying to get you to do it from the board, right? Um, number twenty-three, uh, all new utilities except for twenty-five KV are greater electrical lines must be located underground. Does this development have underground electrical supply?
I would imagine they do. Yes, sir.
Um, twenty-five, any street improvements were planned are required to be constructed to the town of Spring Lake and NC department standards for secondary roads. Is this in the correct and why? Do they have to be constructed to those standards?
It states in the town's ordinance that it needs to be constructed.
These roads will indeed become public streets?
We intend to dedicate them to the town of Spring Lake once they're complete and in compliance with town of Spring Lake's requirements. But the best I recall in reading the town's ordinance, you all warned us to construct subdivision streets to DOT minimum design criteria for subdivisions.
To be blunt, we have enough garbage out there already. We want to develop to the standard.
Yes.
That's consistent with DOT.
Yes.
Um, so it brings me to my next point on number twenty-eight, platting related. Uh, there's a note down there that says, copy of the report, DEEQ, DEEQ convey all common areas to the owner association as shown on each plaque must be provided to the current plan prior to submission of approval for recreation of the next succeeding phase section of this development. Basically, these common areas would be all to be conveyed?
Yes, sir. That would be correct.
What these common areas consist of?
The common areas consist of the stormwater control measure along with the wetlands as required by the conditions in here and any common areas that would be enjoyed for benefit. Now, we're relying upon phase one, two, and three's dedicated parks and rec space, which that parks and rec space, per the notes on the conditionally approved or to be approved site plan, has enough for over two hundred plus lots. Now, we are going to provide forty-nine point six one acres per that conditional site plan of additional open space. The thought process was to not disturb any of the trees, any of the wetlands. Try to preserve every bit of the natural resource there possible. But you could use that if they wanted, if the HOA decided to put a mulch trail or whatever in there, they could enjoy the benefit of that extra almost fifty acres, you know what I mean? And that is in the worst part of the APC, hence why we pulled the lots out of it, so.
And they would be maintaining the stormwater retention?
Yes.
Areas, not the same.
It would be an HOA maintained SEM, yes, sir. Furthermore, it's an infiltration basin as well, which is meant to de-water in a rapid manner, which is conducive to having any airports nearby. We don't want urban rights, so that's why we chose that measure. Already had it evaluated. It meets the infiltration rates required by DEEQ, so.
We don't want to have that.
Correct.
Got you. Uh, good one. Thirty-seven, the developer engineer must admit the county planning inspection of the town of Spring Lake still documents certifying the streets that we've constructed. We've already went over that. So the question for that is why? Because we're going to hit that home with those streets. And we'll make sure everybody understood that this is condition of approval.
Yes, sir.
In this rezoning. Uh, because we're going to inherit the life cycle costs associated with repaving those streets, fixing those sidewalks, things of that nature. So we need to be very careful about how this is laid out and how it's developed. Because those streets will indeed be known as public streets. Uh, one final point, actually I got two more. The, uh, when will the streets be dedicated? Because in here it says, the streets shown on this plaque through a label is public. Uh, have not been accepted by the NC Department of Transportation or adopted by the town of Spring Lake.
Number forty?
Uh, yeah. And so I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, until such time that the streets are accepted and formally added to the street system or adopted by the town of Spring Lake, maintenance and liability to the streets are the responsibility of the developer in any future owners. Um, I highlight that because it becomes a point that now that you continue the development, how many units are left to be developed on that main drive, that single load?
Are we talking about not this phase nor phase three?
All of this was done, completed. How many units are coming in off of Odell?
There's a hundred and fifty-three per that site plan and that includes phase one, it's already flagged. Phase two, which is currently under the permitting phase. Um, phase three, as it's drawn on that, is forty-two lots, which is a reduction as originally approved phase three. Phase four is an addition of twenty-eight lots.
All right. So, uh, I would, I would stand the reason with this board that we wouldn't want to accept the streets as public streets until the higher developers have been disrupted.
Understood.
Okay. Because we don't want to take what's already been developed and now accept that while people could need the drive to do it and develop it. In addition, I think that Commissioner Mike brought up this other low density for temporary basis on the Mac Street, of course, for the same reason, you have all this construction going on coming through that subdivision. I do believe that in the long run, there should be an opportunity, egress and egress.
We have to. As it's shown, not on that particular one, but phase two will have any secondary means of egress, which fire code dictates that, plus the simple fact that we wanted to loop the town of Spring Lake's water system via phase two and phase one to Odell Road's existing infrastructure, which I do believe is either a ten or a twelve inch water name right there. I don't, I'm not quite certain right off the top of my head that I have it in my file.
So volume's not an issue?
We have not had a hydro protest on that yet. Phases one and two, I'm sure have, but I'm not the engineer for phases one and two. That was a different engineer.
Number one, any potential homeowners will have a disclosure statement that it is in the APC.
Correct. Yes. We had agreed with that. Yes, that will be put on the plaque to let them know that it falls within the APC, so. And guys, I mean, with R six A, mobile homes are accepted, but it also allows for multifamily. And you gotta look at the fact that it was nine and a half or like nine point six something units per acre with R six A. I mean, we're not doing anything that's pretty tall from the navigation standpoint, you know, with the airfield right there. We're also not looking for a density, you know what I mean, of nine point six four or whatever that number was. I do remember it was, I had it memorized just two or three days ago. Anyway, um, we're only at one point one units per acre and we have pulled it as far south and east as we possibly can while not impacting the wetlands, so. But yes, I'd, to comment on RULAC's perspective.
And then, uh, forty-two is that there is a disclosure statement that blocks ninety-six through one oh one and lots one ten and one eleven affected by the hundred year and five hundred year flood zone as of the date of this report.
That was number forty-two?
Forty-two.
I don't have that in my copy, but read that again slowly, please.
Developer shall include a disclosure statement before the code, covenants and restrictions, copy. Deans, and on the final plaque stating lots ninety-six through one oh one and lots one ten and one eleven are affected by the hundred year and five hundred year flood zone as of the date of this report.
Well, let me bring that up real quick on the TV. Is it good?
Yeah, I have her loaded to sleep, thanks.
And the other thing we're going to do too, guys, is we're going to regrade the lots such that the building paths elevation will be above the hundred year, so I'd like to see that just for a second. Because that's not what I anticipated. But I mean, if it's a disclosure that you all would more comfortable with, that's fine, but we're going to regrade it anyway. I mean, nobody would want to put a hundred, put a finished floor at eleven hundred years.
That's the question of the lot.
Right.
And so here it is. Especially there's a disclosure. If someone would, it's another caveat to a guide because here it is, it's a disclosure. Here's a petition.
And it's?
Which one?
Forty-two. Forty-two, okay. That is different from the copy that I have that was signed by the attorney.
I can interject?
Yes, please.
Remember, we have two cases tonight.
Right.
And that condition was under the administrative approval for the subdivision plan. That's, that number forty-two?
Okay. Now, this has got two more conditions than this one. This, yes, yes. Forty-two is in regards to the APC one. Yeah. And there may be hundred year flood at the rears, but here's the thing, guys, we're not, these are going to be shovel-ready padded lots. We're grading them such that they're not crawl space, they're not basement, you know what I mean? They are slab-ready above the hundred year flood. So that's our intent when we go to do the subdivision. There's, you know, that may have been a typo in regards to the hundred year and five hundred, but no, go back to the picture of the preliminary site plan depicting phase four. Can y'all?
Pull up ours. Pull down back up one. Because I think now you'd be able to see the numbers and you can.
Yes.
Sorry, we need to take a little longer than that.
That's a, all right. I'm trying to see it as y'all are seeing it. Ninety-eight, ninety-nine may have it at the very, very rears, but that is within the area that's beyond the setbacks anyway. We can't build within that area. So same with any of those. Over here, we couldn't build back there where that fat black line is, that very bold line. We can't build it, guys. So that's beyond.
Did you ask for that? I just want to make sure that you were able to hear what you just said. Could you repeat that?
I'm sorry. Go back to the mic. That way it's everybody here as well.
That very bold line that you see, that fat black line behind one oh one and one, or no, excuse me, one ten and one eleven, that may be the flood zone, but do you see the dash line within the lot itself? Those are our setbacks. We can only do it within setbacks as required by the conditions. So same with ninety-eight and ninety-nine. The homes could not be placed back there where that boulder line would be anyway.
Can you point out the boulder line that you're talking about?
Yes.
Please keep your comments in the audience when asked, Susan. Thank you. I'm going to point it out. No, I personally can't.
See that boulder line there, guys? Yes, the fast line of all is where the five hundred year flood would be. Our setbacks for any homes, our setbacks for any homes would be beyond that and uphill, up elevation, if that assures everybody. So, and the intent as well would be to have the padded, finished ready of all these lots well above that. We're, we're not looking to put any homes or have any, you know, issues later, so. Um, thanks for sharing this, Mr. Board, so.
Believe it or not, I just want to summarize the three things. This is consistent with our land use plan.
Yes.
All right? And it is, uh, low density, is compatible with the surrounding areas in terms of itself and water sewer impacts are minimal to include no loop sewer lift station that would have ongoing maintenance. And there's an adequate capacity there.
Yes. And this really does four overlaps into three, three overlaps into four, due to them needing to be done together, something like this, so. And I apologize for not having this copy, but anyway, that's not the one that we had signed.
And again, are you willing to make sure we amplify that they have meant as best as possible the conditions set forth by RULAC?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else here, or any other questions from the board?
I have, uh, I just want to come in and ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in the summer, and I don't know if coming to town to get it, but it talks about schools, capacity, enrollment.
Capacity of what?
Yeah, the schools listed in the area.
Yes, ma'am.
Manchester Elementary is not listed and it's like in Spring Lake.
Okay, that, that would be the county's presentation, but yes, ma'am. And I mean, I don't know if this assists you all, but fishing wildlife, we've got the approval, you know what I mean? USACE with the army corps, we've got theirs, you know, we've, we've done everything we can short of got approval to get started, basically. We've tried to uncover every rock. A lot of people will come in here, guys, for just a straight rezoning or a conditional rezoning. We've spent almost one full year trying to do our due diligence before we go any further. I, I know that's. I, I know that's probably pretty unheard of, but I don't like legislation uncovered where I can, so.
The school information on pass enrollment, we received from Cumberland County Public Schools. Their planners, their any zoning case, we request that they send us the effective schools and the school enrollment pass information.
I was out there today, mayor, in the airplane, I was in case, and I was just trying to figure out what I was doing, thank you. And so um, to speak to Commissioner Mike's concern or uh, observation in regards to the, I didn't find it to be terrible.
It wasn't loaded out.
That's why I'm not filing.
Is there any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Again, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Uh, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Last call, is there anyone uh, to speak in opposition of this request? If none, this public hearing is now closed. Alright, well now move on to agenda nine A. And this is regarding ZO eight twenty-four dash zero zero four one, zoning from our armory room or residential and our ten residential district to R six A EZ residential district, conditional zoning from more districts to zoning district for a portion of parts of a parcel containing fifteen point three three personal mites, plus our mites acres located on North Oakdale Road, east of Old Angus Lane submitted by Mr. Smith on behalf of Kalen Farms and Junior Jared Smith. And I would doubt if I am able to approve or deny that zoning. Second, Commissioner Thompson, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous, though. There was one. We'll now move on to nine B, that's the EV zero one four seven dash two four. Kalen Farms minor modifications based being four. Mr. Farm?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Richard Fagan. I uh, am a planner one here and serve in the current planning, uh, planning inspection department for Cumberland County. I'm here to present DEV zero one four seven dash twenty-four preliminary subdivision plan. Kalen Farms minor modification of previously approved phase three with the addition of phase four. As you can see, this is a general overview of the submitted preliminary plan, which includes the minor modification of phase three along with the addition of phase four. Just some background, this is the original phase three, which was approved back in August fourteenth of twenty twenty-three per DEV case zero one zero two dash twenty-three. Some key points, the original phase three total lot count was forty-seven. Old Angus Lane terminated into a cul-de-sac. Old Angus Lane's overall length was approximately nine hundred and sixty-five feet from the cul-de-sac to the boundary of phase one and three. The total length from the cul-de-sac to Oakdale Road was approximately two thousand six hundred and twenty-five feet. Here we see the uh, phase three modified plan. The, and I made a little typo here, the modified phase three total lot count is actually forty-two lots, not thirty-three, please, excuse me. Uh, the Old Angus Lane has been revised to provide access and connection to phase four. With the modified length of Old Angus Lane is approximately now eight hundred and thirty feet. And this minor modification is consistent with the previously approved conditional zoning case conditions per P twenty-one dash thirty-eight. This is the phase four addition of Kalen Farms. The total lot count is twenty-eight lots. Old Angus Lane is revised here to provide access and connection to phase four. Uh, one other typo here, the modified length of Old Angus Lane is now approximately nine hundred and sixty-five feet. The total length from the proposed phase four cul-de-sac street termination to Oakdale Road is approximately three thousand four hundred and seventy-three feet. This proposed phase four is consistent with the previously approved conditional zoning condition, uh, conditions for Kalen Farms phase four per ZO one twenty-four zero zero four one, which we had just heard. Lot characteristics for phase three and phase four. Total number of lots, forty-two for phase three modified. Uh, typical lot width and depth, the width is seventy-five feet, eighty-eight feet is the depth. Typical lot sizes are sixty-six hundred um, square feet with larger lots ranging from seventy-two hundred to ten thousand. Uh, phase four has twenty-eight lots, typical lot width is seventy-five feet, with the lot depth being ninety feet. Uh, typical lot size ranges from six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, larger lots ranging from eighty-three hundred to eleven hundred square feet. And I provided some overall development notes uh, for Kalen Farms, Kalen Farms right there. Key conditions of this, conditions of approval are the same as they were for ZO one twenty-four dash zero zero four one. Uh, mobile homes are prohibited. Uh, also in addition, parks and recreation options for phase four, which we previously discussed along with phases one through three. Access to phase four shall only occur from phases one through three unless otherwise approved by the town board commissioners. And then disclosure statements are placed in the Homeowners Association documents on the face of the final plan and within the deed stating that Kalen Farms phase four is located within the vicinity of a military base, and lots are located within the accident potentials in the area one. Phase four and the modified phase three are consistent with the town of Spring Lake zoning and development ordinances. And that concludes my presentation. So, feel free, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Blossom?
Thank you, Mayor. Originally, just to be clear, this was phases one through three that were originally approved.
Correct.
Today, we are modifying phase three, or we max modify phase three and add phase four.
Correct.
And uh, so, thank you, that's the only question I have right now.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have further comments, Mayor, if there are.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blossom.
Not for you, thank you. Uh, but the rule act, I wanna revisit the rule act um, recommendation. And so, according to the Army Regimental Command, in twenty twenty-three, they were nine military aviation accidents. Twenty twenty-four, they're fifteen, and twenty twenty-five, there've been three so far. Now, some of those are not on US soil, those happen abroad at some local instances. And how far do we wanna go when it comes to jeopardizing property and human life? Uh, is my main question. A lot of these uh, lots were already approved by us in the past, okay? So I understand that, um, but there is a growing need that I think needs to be addressed to when it comes to doing what we can to protect property and life. Now, uh, if we don't do anything now, according to the accident per, uh, accident potential zone, thank you, uh, there is still um, uh, risk, I understand that. And this modification of phase three and addition of phase four adds more density here to this whole layout than we originally had. And so I know the comment was made, will we pull further south, will we pull further east, what we could, but this is a bigger footprint than what we originally approved. And with the potential danger that goes along with, you know, adding more housing and adding more people, lives to this area, it just causes me to have more hesitation and concern. Now, how far is too far, though? We have an accident potential zone that when you look, do you have that map?
Can you keep the conversation sound far? We can hear you up here.
A lot of the boulder lines.
Um, I have ones that I originally asked for earlier. Uh, go back to your desktop, please. Uh, there's one, the third last one, I see my name there. Okay, so this is the noise based on rule act. This is their noise zones, okay? This noise zone, of course, calculates a lot of Spring Lake already. Uh, if you can go to, do you have the next one? Okay, so these are the APCs. To the southeast, you have Simmons, and then to the north, you have Oak. Now, that extends, that red line extends all the way to Commerce Creek, Safeway. So how far is too far? And uh, and I'm not trying to express an opinion right now, other than we wanna protect property and human life, so we can make the justification to stop this urban development here in this area. But then that zone stretches through Manchester Road and eighty-seven, where we have, of course, other housing, we have businesses, we have potential future cases, we have uh, right now residential that are trying to sell because we have now zoned that according to our plan, uh, our, uh, our future use plan, zoned it commercial. So we'll be revisiting this in the future, and then we're gonna have to address this again all the way up, like I said, to Commerce Creek. I just, you know, I wanna be safe and fair and acknowledge recommendations from Rule Act. But I also think that Rule Act wants to kind of extend their EC, their APC, APC zones, you know? Uh, so right now, we, we have a clear line, you showed the maps with the red lines, where this could impact this development, but then you also have the potential that Rule Act wants to say, there are a lot of accidents going on. I think we need to make this zone even wider and longer. And then what does that do to the property owners there, and what does that do to future business owners? Uh, you also, this also brings up the thought that because we're butted next to a military installation, and we have property that is probably um, property that the military may want, if not now, in the future because of security reasons, does that force homeowners and property owners and business owners that then, I can't do anything with this property because Rule Act wants all this property for safety reasons? I'm not saying that's the case, or that it wouldn't be the case, but the potential lies there that how far is too far. So, uh, getting back to my opinion on this right now, because we're adding more housing and more lots based on this modification in this now phase four, I'm not in favor of this, uh, even though, understanding if it doesn't get approved, we still have potential loss of property and life there. I just have to, if I, if I, Rule Act, our communication at the time of meeting, that I've said my piece, thank you, Mayor.
Any questions, departments, or board? But Rule Act doesn't determine those boundaries, or Rule Act can't expand.
You're right, it's, it's regulation, not by Rule Act themselves. I'm sorry, thank you.
Uh, so I'm now entertaining a motion to approve or deny DEV zero one four seven dash two four. Okay, should I talk first?
So.
Who's your champion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four-one. Now, before we move on, I would like to uh, take a point privilege and recognize our Commonwealth County Commissioner Chair, Commissioner DeMiere. Do you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Recognizing. Thank you for coming, I'm a big deal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Board. It's always a pleasure uh, to come to your municipality. Uh, really came to see our team that was briefing, and I miss them because I was at the city of Fayetteville watching their new car get sworn in, um, but uh, it's a pleasure to be here, and as you know, we're committed. We look forward to a meeting that we're gonna have with your board hopefully later this month, uh, as we talk about priorities for your municipality as well as for our county. So, thank you for your leadership, Madam Mayor, uh, and to your board, uh, thank you for your leadership as well. Look forward to working with you as we grow our community.
Thank you so much, Commissioner DeMiere. Alright, uh, we are now on to our updates, and I do not have any updates. Alright, I don't have any updates. Um, I'm surprised, I think this is the first time I haven't had any updates since I've been up here, so. Mayor President? Uh, that's okay. Make sure your life is like, you know, you have some updates for everybody, so we'll look forward to that. Mayor President?
I don't have any updates. Um, I'm gonna do that work. Oh, no, I do have. Um, I uh, I just got um, emailed last week that I had been appointed to the National League of Cities Youth and Family. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. I did. I, I attended the mayor's coalition uh, in the place of the mayor Friday. Uh, we had a good meeting, um, uh, see, um, I said, chairman, and then the air. Gave us some updates in the county. Um, Fort Liberty uh, is getting ready to celebrate the army's two-hundred-and-fifth year anniversary on June fourteenth. So I know, and people will be knowing something here for that. Uh, they also briefed us that they will be bringing in a few, about fifteen hundred more um, uh, soldiers, and they're gonna be bringing in some extra tanks, so if your house is shaking, it's gonna shake a little more. And they are going to try to put out, um, they're gonna try to put out, um, give us a schedule of uh, some of the planned um, these, the planned trainings and, and also, uh, they're getting ready to put out, um, unreserved stuff, I mean, a new app. And we'll announce that when we get there.
Commissioner Thompson?
The only thing that I have, visit our community watch, will be starting back up, and we'll be on the Thursday after Monday, from six to seven PM across the street, over at two forty-five AM. So, bring, bring your neighbors, um, and just see there. Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Lightman?
Good, Mayor. I uh, didn't have any pictures this time, was, was busy with my day job. But we collected our, our second most amount of trash ever. On Saturday, the February first, nine of us went out and collected two thousand six hundred and sixty pounds of debris throughout the roots of Spring Lake.
And so did her sleeve.
We cleaned up two illegal dump sites. Mayor, this, this is gonna break my heart, that one contained kids' clothes, toys, and everything. and everything just thrown in the woods. So, you know, whatever it is, the scum of parents or whatever, the kids shouldn't suffer over something like this. The second illegal dump site contained a vehicle radiator, a headlight assembly, lots of plastic sheeting, uh, like used for painting either house or.
Like construction work?
Painting booth, yes, something, something along that lines. Um, both of these illegal dump sites are in a wooded area. It's on, on property, but it's just easy to just dump stuff out in these areas that have lots of woods on there. So as we go, one of the things that town is committed to is cleaning up the blight. And as we clean up this blight, it's gotta be identified and you've gotta have a plan to, to come and get this. But it starts with the residents. It, it is these idiots that are out there dumping trash in the town's Spring Lake. Some of it is residents, but others it is not. And for all of y'all out there, we got trail cams that are gonna be taking y'all's pictures and I for one am gonna be one that'd be glad to see that you get caught. Been doing this for almost four years, out here cleaning up this town, Mayor. You know, no matter what that, the case we go through here. Uh, I'm not gonna steal Commissioner Bossett's thunder, but the Adopt a Street program, oh my gosh, it is doing well. Uh, we've got that going, so I'll stop with that. Code enforcement's gonna be out there doing, doing code enforcement and showing that our town starts to meet those standards, to start looking like a town that we are proud to live in and ensure that we've got a place that when we come home, we're proud of our community. Mayor, moving on, our Military Tribute Banner Program went high today. You got the thumbs up back there for Ms. Hickman. So we did it last year, we're getting ready to kick it off again this year. This is for anyone that would like to have a Military Tribute Banner flown on Main Street. When we get Main Street filled up, we've got other streets so we're gonna put these banners on out there. So it will fly from On Forces Day to cover our active duty members, to Memorial Day to cover our, our service members who are along the rivers, to include Veterans Day. So up and down Main Street, we'll have these Military Tribute Banners. They're one hundred eighty-eight dollars for the banners, same as last year. We're able to keep the cost the same. And all you gotta do is, you just need the segment, the lady back there with her thumb up or Casey at the front, bring in proof of military service, uh, a nice digital picture or a picture that can be scanned in so it can be put out there on our Main Street as we go through here. So Ms. Hickman, thank you very much for your, your, your efforts and your tireless work on, on doing this. I for one appreciate, thank you. Uh, Military Advisory Committee, uh, we've got two openings on this committee. Our next meeting will be February twenty-fifth, six thirty P M right here in this room. Uh, Mayor, Military Veterans Affairs Committee, Veteran or Military in a Veteran Population. The stuff that I'd like to highlight is that our annual Memorial Day, our Veterans Day ceremony, we have a Veteran Service Officer Day, uh, working on Spring Lake Veterans Park with the Town Manager and the Town Crew that's been working out there. Don't forget, I didn't notice the, the rock that's up there. Ms. Rory, thank you very much for that. We've also are planning the Suicide Wears Motorcycle Ride September of this year. So our Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee is busy in this town. We'll work on lots of stuff, we've got two openings. The meetings are open to public, you don't have to be a veteran, you don't have to be an active duty member. If you would like to come to these meetings, see what's going on, if you've got some input, you've got, if you've got some sweat equity that you want to put into this, we would love to have you come out and be a part of what's growing, what's growing in the town of Spring Lake. Mayor, I think that's, that's just gonna be right back.
Thank you. Mr. Bossett?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have our Rehearsal Committee meeting this Wednesday at four o'clock at the Fox and Wright Center, if anybody would like to attend that, uh, help us out. And, uh, our Adopt a Street program, can we throw that up? So Carley was able to organize a couple of pictures with our Adopt a Street organizations. Uh, on the left, we have the Five Bit Sigmas and we have on the right, uh, Driven Academy Sports. Uh, so both adopting streets, their signs got put up and we appreciate their hard work. If anybody's interested in adopting a street in Spring Lake, the cost at this time is a hundred dollars. That will go up come the next fiscal year in July. So, uh, you gotta deal with that. But we appreciate those that are able to volunteer their time to help us out here in Spring Lake. And, uh, our next town cleanup is April fifth, townwide cleanup is April fifth. I'll get more information as that time comes. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, and just to clarify, for those two programs, the Military Brand Program is a one-time fee and the Adopt a Street program is a reoccurring fee, so.
It's a one-time fee, recurring commitment?
Recurring commitment, okay, there we go. Just to make sure that we provide a little theory tonight. Make sure, Captain?
Okay, I'm last, I believe it was last Tuesday, I had an opportunity to attend the, um, Board of Education meeting, read. And it was phenomenal because I had an opportunity to meet the new incoming board members and they talked, um, a lot about their vision for, um, Cumberland County Schools and being that I am an educator, it was very important to me because, um, our students, you know, they are very important and we need more finances and budgets for our teachers and those of our students, so. Um, I had a really good feeling because they really wanna reach out into the community and serve, which that's what they are supposed to do, so. I was really excited about being with them, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Rory.
Just gotta get a pointer. Um, as I, as I suggested at our last meeting, the, uh, each meeting now up until adoption of the budget, I will give you the budget pieces, uh, the consideration to provoke your thoughts. Uh, staff has already began developing the budget for fiscal year twenty-six. We already know there's a couple pieces for us to think about. But the first thing I want to do is echo, uh, this process that we're under in terms of cleanup, green, he cleans the gold. Um, it doesn't happen overnight and it's, it's a massive, massive undertaking when you think of debris, uh, the illegal dump sites, uh, things of that nature. And so, uh, Steve, the staff, has actually gave us just kind of a little synopsis of what's been going on. And so far, if you look in the left column, um, the total pounds haul for round furniture and solid waste mix, this is the stuff where they go around and pick it up in the front yards, right? It's twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty pounds. That comes with a tipping fee of six hundred and fourteen dollars. That's how we have to pay to put it at the landfill, okay? The tipping fee. The, the middle one is organic or vegetative debris that is covered by the general fund, this is not part of the sanitation fund. So there's no real dollars associated with it except through property taxes, pay and such. To that, to date, seventy-six thousand pounds of yard debris, leaves, limbs, stuff, okay? In the final column, all the way to the right, is what we refer to as the Manchester Dump Project. Um, you will note that beginning in January of this year, we started cleaning up this Manchester site. Um, and to date, we've hauled a hundred and thirty-six thousand pounds, um, from that location. And it's not even a dent, not even a dent. And so the tipping fees for that is two thousand eight sixty. What that doesn't show is the, the labor and capital involved, whether it's the labor or the, the trucks involved, it's some kind of cost area. So we basically suggest that when we take and do two, uh, third yard roll-offs per day, the cost to the town is approximately six thousand dollars per day at this Manchester project. So, uh, we have installed trail cams that are activated by cellphone. So if I drive by, it should send a message to the police department. Um, and they can go download the cards, they can look at it, they can do different things. And so they're working diligently to make sure they get that attached to the cellphone right now, they just take a shot, picture of it, have to get the cards. Um, but we're, we're monitoring a particular site in going forward. We're also going to be installing flock cameras, which are basically LPRs, they're license plate readers. We're gonna put those flock cameras on these sites with a sign that basically says dumping is a felony, you will go to jail and we will seize your assets, period. Not, well, according to general statutes, that's not, that's not, we will make it very, very clear. You will go to jail and we will seize your assets. Um, we go out there, clean up, one step forward, two steps back. They come back the very next weekend and dump something. This is people illegally dumping on the private property of another. Uh, I just can't understand, fathom the thought process that somebody believes that's acceptable in any form of fact. And so I admit to be quite frustrated, I think staff is frustrated with it and we want to take action, um, across the entire town, not just that particular site, the dump sites and the things that we're dealing with. So I wanted to share that little tidbit of information. We've got a long way to go. Uh, the next budget nugget is going to be, let's see, I've got it on my card. Retirement contributions, as a local government employee, uh, or employer, doesn't matter if you're the county, state, uh, the city, or the towns. We are required to participate in the North Carolina Retirement System. We are required to participate in the North Carolina Retirement System. You can opt out of the system. And so for every salary dollar for an employee, they have to contribute six percent of their salary to the retirement system. The town, the city, the county, whatever the local government employer is, has to contribute another amount. We have been notified that that amount is going to increase, increase by approximately one percent next year, potentially increase. Basically, that's them saying, hey, we're going to do this, we just want you to get a fair warning that it's coming. And so with that in mind, uh, the impact, you can see there's a different impact for firing general employees, they're covered in the general fund, uh, they're not part of the utility fund. And then there's also a different impact for law enforcement officers, you have different things that run with them in terms of the percentage that you pay into the system and four over Ks and things of that nature. But at the end of the day, the estimated impact is thirty-two thousand dollars per year. Just like that, all right? If we don't change any other thing in the budget, and I mean absolutely nothing in the budget, the cost of fuel goes up, nothing in the budget, you're gonna realize an estimated impact of about thirty-two thousand dollars a year. Keeping with the, the, the thick thought process, one cent on the tax rate is equivalent to forty-one thousand in revenue, one cent on the tax rate. Just like that, you've almost eat up one cent of the tax, uh, tax rate. And we have no option. The only way to reduce that cost is reduce the headcount. It's just that, they reduce the headcount. Ad valorem tax, uh, tax imposed on item based on assessed value. The key to understanding this budget nugget is that ad valorem is based on value. The higher the value, the more the tax, right? So I want to make sure that we're aware of that. So, um, we heard Todd talk about, you know, rental incentives and upgrades and improvements. And so this particular property is two oh seven South Fifth Street. It currently has an assessed value of thirty-three thousand. That means that at a tax rate of seventy-four cents, we get about two hundred and forty-six dollars per year in tax value out of this property. If we did a tax increase, a ten cent tax increase, I keep it that way because it's easy math from the floor. And so, uh, so to debate and talk about, it's not that you're gonna do a ten cent increase, but it's an easy way for you to calculate different things. And so if you did a ten cent tax increase, you'd see the total, the top, the total property tax would now jump to two hundred and seventy-nine at that same thirty-three thousand assessed value or roughly two dollars and seventy-five cents a month to thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars a year. So that's just dealing with the tax rate. This particular property, someone has come in and we did it. I hope they work the Cumberland County, uh, they got rental assistance programs or grants or whatever to upgrade these, um, I hope they do this across the board as much as they can. You'll notice that it's listed for sale, but it's up in on the market for two hundred and two days. Um, it's listed for sale at a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Now remember, the assessed value is thirty-three. They're listing it for sale at a hundred and forty-one. That's for seven hundred and ninety-two square feet or roughly a hundred and seventy-nine dollars per square foot. All the developers in here are thinking, yeah, see if that's other stuff. Um, same concept, if, if the assessed value jumps from thirty-three two to a hundred and forty-one five, keeping the tax rate the same, the taxes now will increase from two forty-six to a thousand forty-eight. It's all according to value, as assessed value, all according to value. With that same ten cent increase in tax rate, it'll jump to one thousand one ninety or represent an increase of eleven eighty-three per month or a hundred and forty-two dollars per year. One final piece of property is on Duncan Street. Now I want you to think about this in terms of what you hear in terms of light, the conditions that you have all across the city. If this is what you have, and this is what you got, you have to ask the question, what does the neighborhood look like? All right? And so even though you can list it for sale at a hundred and forty-one thousand, is, you can list it for anything you want to, but it's gotta be at some, something, some, a price point someone's willing to buy based on that neighborhood, based on, is it compatible? Am I willing to invest a hundred and forty thousand dollars in a property that's surrounded by thirty-three thousand dollar properties or those that are vacant, abandoned, like, you get the picture, right? And so we gotta keep that in mind as we move forward with the budget. Duncan Street, right here behind City Hall, uh, listing for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand at one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one square feet. Uh, its current assessed value is eighty-six. So it, it garners about six hundred and forty dollars a year in T O S, T O S L property taxes at a seventy-four cent tax rate. If you increase that tax rate by ten cents and keep assessed value the same, you're looking at an increase in taxes of about seven hundred and twenty dollars, seven dollars and twenty cent per month, eighty-six forty per year. That's the impact. So one way of thinking about this one is that if you did a ten cent taxi increase, every one cent, um, is what, seventy-two cents per month? So every, something along those lines, and my math may be off. Um, Jimmy could probably square me away if I asked him, but I don't want to. That's at a hundred and thirty-eight dollars per square foot. Now you'll notice that these are straight off a real to about, it's online, it must be true. Um, at the end of the day, I don't even know what this sales price is gonna be. I don't know what this assessed value is gonna be. So the reason why it's important to keep this in front of the board as kind of a budget nugget, that's the one you said was missing a picture. My bad, Carley taught me, she says, I said, don't worry about it. The reason why it's important just to keep this in front of the board is that we have that potential to lose one point four million in sales tax revenue based on the distribution that the county's adopted to go from, right, population to ad valorem. And so that potential to lose one point four million, I'm asking all of staff, as they develop their budgets for each department, to focus on an eight hundred thousand dollar revenue loss. It assumes that we're gonna have at least a twenty percent increase in our assessed value, not a forty, not a fifty, not a sixty, but a twenty percent. And then we're gonna have to offset that eight hundred thousand in, uh, revenue increases, i.e. tax increases, or expense cuts. And the only way to deal with that is going to be at that seventy percent, eighty percent mark for the personnel. So, um, when you think about this strategically, um, this is a huge hill decline, a huge hill decline. It will have a detrimental effect on our service delivery strategy and our capacity to provide those services, period. I don't care how you look at it, how you think about it. That's, at the end of the day, that's the message that's gotta be going forward. And so when we come to you with a budget proposal, how do you balance out those demands with the dollars that you have? As the budget officer, I am required by statute to present a balanced budget, period. I've taken oath to do just that and I intend to do that, all right? I'm not gonna shy away from that. Um, we have to think about a whole lot of things. This is just one little piece of that in terms of what the assessed value is, what that revenue's gonna be versus the revenue loss of how we present a balanced budget. And so I want to keep those things in front of me. Next time, it'll be something similar, but something the same. It'll probably be dealing with the capital piece. Um, it'll be dealing, you know that we have our meeting on February the.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, um, and so I opened a look, I looked over the focus areas for the street usage plan, I looked at the goals and objectives. Uh, that should be coming to you guys for kind of a prioritization basis. From that, we will get sixteen initiatives. I also know that even though we haven't completed our asset inventory assessment, that our early indication from our project managers and our consulting engineers is that when you combine water and sewer. is that when you combine water and sewer, you're looking at sixty, anywhere from sixty to seventy million of needed repairs and upgrades to our water and sewer system. Now let me say that again, sixty to seventy million. Okay? How do you do that? I got an idea, I'm a little funded, got a thousand dollars a year on perpetuity. So now that sixty million, the time value money, if we don't make those necessary repairs, we just kick the can down the road, it piles up, it piles up, it piles up, it piles up. Another huge yield decline. That'll be your next budget nugget. Sure, I will be sharing that in detail at our next strategic plan meeting on February the...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, here at...
Six.
Six o'clock, here, at six o'clock. So all will be encouraged to attend because that will be the topic of discussion. How do you maintain a sustainable, efficient utility service using yesterday's dollars that have never been invested in the system?
That's a lot, Mr. Moore.
I know it. I'm always a favorite, right?
Always a favorite. Absolutely, you can ask a question by sitting.
So my question is, if a house is assessed at seventy-four thousand but sells at a hundred and forty thousand, does the assessment amount change once it's sold at that amount?
Yes, it should. Now how will tax assess, with the council comes up with some stuff? I'm sorry, Jerry, I got no idea. But yes, it should. Now, if it's the full sales price, that's a different story. It's the same thing when you start talking about multi-family units and how they're taxed. It is somewhat of a hidden part, I would believe.
Mr. Porter?
Two things. One, very briefly, just for public discourse, the trial date of the Plush case has been moved to March tenth because David Corey, who represents the landowners, had to have a procedure, appendectomy. He's going to be fine, but he was out of commission for a while. And then thing two is really not necessarily purely town business, but just something I've noticed and I thought I'd bring to the board's attention just for you all to think about when you're thinking about funding various things and also see something, do something. As y'all know, I have many practice areas. One of them is representing respondent parents who have DSS filed petitions in regards to their kids. Obviously, I do my job to defend them the best that I can, but the amount of cases, the chairman can probably back me up because they fund DSS partially at least through the county, that we have seen involving children born in this county to include springling with fentanyl and other drugs in their system. And then I won't say the worst, but in some ways that you're really thinking about it in this works, kids who are three, five, seven, eight older, who show up to the hospital with fentanyl in their systems. It's truly disturbing, and I've been doing this lot of work for a while now, and it just keeps getting worse and worse. I don't have statistics or numbers to give you, but it is a problem. So I just present that to the board just in passing to keep that in mind when you think about funding the police department, fire department, and your policies about lighting, housing, things like that. It's disturbing.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
What happened to it?
All right, I will now begin motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one for three one eight eleven eight three. Attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS one four three three one eight eleven eight four, economic development. And Christian Pausos, do you have the...
I do not. I assume it's one four three point three one eight point eleven eight...
Six personnel. Thank you, he is personnel. Christian Javlin. Christian Thompson? Hi, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're now in closed session. Thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate you and hope you come out again.
That's gonna mean a lot.
Okay, why don't you come out for a session? Commit your comments.
Oh, it's totally, I'm sorry.
Slow move. Any discussion, all in favor? How's your carries meeting here?